Okay, good evening, everyone. And thank you for coming to the planning board meeting this evening. If you'll notice, we have an exit here, here, and all the way in the back at the end of the hallway. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for our service personnel and all the people suffering in this world during this holiday season. Thank you.
Let's hope Sandra makes it.
Yeah, really, absolutely. All right. So, Alitha, did you want to bring up the minutes that we need to review this evening and approve? Or Dan, did you want to do that?
Yeah, so I see August 2022, April 2023, September of 2023, and October of 2023, and November of 2023.
Okay, and those were sent out by email. Can I have a motion to accept these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
How much is going on?
I'll second.
Yep, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. This evening, we have two public hearings. The first one is Ken Code Development Corporation. Is there anyone here expecting to be heard regarding this application?
Which one?
No? All right. So, a motion to...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We had a whole discussion before, after the last meeting, I believe, that actually, Dan, can you give us an idea why we're not showing up and being delayed?
Not my job to do that. It's their job to tell us why, to be honest with you, but, I mean, I believe that there was, I believe that our planning department reached out, and there was also a number of emails back and forth that I was copied on between the applicant and his representatives, but, I don't know, I can't really, I can't really give a good answer for that because it's not my project to control.
My understanding through this discussion was that part of the problem is that they have not completed everything that they should have before us for subdivision.
And one of the components that we've been waiting on is the delineation of the wetland on the property and showing it on the map. And so, in our code, if they needed a water resource permit, there's a public hearing component for that. And so, they opened up the public hearings on the subdivision, and we had assumed that that could be done rather quickly. The wetlands have been delineated in the field with flags according to the wetland specialist. According to the engineer at the last meeting and the meetings before, they just can't get the survey scheduled out there to go out there and literally just survey the points of the flags and then put it on the map.
Okay, so where I'm going with this is that this is something, part of the criteria that should be completed before, ideally, before they come before us. Is that correct?
Most applicants and their representatives will know that in our code, there are certain components that need to be shown on the maps. So...
I get what you're saying.
There was, the original mapping showed, the original mapping showed an area above on the lot that said wetland per GIS mapping. And I said, well, that's, frankly, that's just not good enough. We need an actual wetland specialist to go out, delineate the limits of the wetland, and then show them on the map. And so, that has been a continuous comment that has not been addressed.
So, having said that, at this point, all we can do is adjourn, correct?
Because we got ourselves into this situation.
Right, so...
So, you know, I mean, what it boils down to is not allowing anyone to schedule a public hearing until they've satisfied Dan's comment letters.
Right, right.
Period. And if we continue to allow that happen, to happen, what we're doing is causing people to show up, expecting to be able to speak, wasting time with conversation like this. And so, we just have to, we just have to put our foot down going forward.
Well, yeah, we have to, in order to, for us to set a public hearing, we have to be assured that they have a complete application.
That's it?
And I don't think that's too much to ask.
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so either. I mean, the reality is, is that once the public hearing is closed, there's a shot clock, if you will, where the planning board has to make a decision. So, the suggestion would be, it should be generally informed to allow you to say that the preliminary approval content is provided and satisfied. That would be, that would be a good way to do it, if you ask me.
So, before we, before we have a public hearing...
So, what you're, what you're going to hear is, you're going to hear people say, "Well, I'd like to also hear from the neighbors to see if anything is going to change here," and, you know, that, that, there's some legitimacy to that, too, but there has to be a level of completeness so that we can get to this point and have, you know, reasonable and acceptable input from the applicant versus weighing in any comments that the public might have that might alter that plan. But, you know, and there's also subjectivity on, on what the public can present that would represent a change that would be needed on the plan.
Right.
You know, if, if they're meeting the code, in theory, you know, that's an acceptable plan.
Right.
You know, just because somebody doesn't like it doesn't mean that. But if there's a substantive comment from the, from the public, for example, if somebody from the public knows that there's maybe a stream running through the property and they didn't show it for some reason, well, that's going to alter the design. So, I, I understand both sides of it, but I also expect some level of responsiveness to the comments to be able to keep the process moving. If you want to make the process move as an applicant or the representative for an applicant, you have work to do, and you have to get it done.
I think there's another concern here, too, because if they surveyed the wetlands, they delineated it, and a period of time goes by, they could be losing the flags out there.
Yeah.
And we might not get an accurate depiction of what the wetlands are on the site.
Right.
I mean, anybody who's doing wetland delineation needs to be on a survey, you know to line up the survey, you should line up the survey right away. So, I don't know, we're going to start to lose faith in whatever's going to show up on this map. I don't know if those flags went away. We just had a major storm event.
Right.
Well, we can't do anything about this, apparently, but maybe it's something we can do in the future.
Well, I mean, our options, our options are to adjourn the meeting or to close the meeting. Our options are to adjourn the meeting or, or we can close the public hearing. Now, if we close the public hearing, can we, this is a question for the town attorney, if we close the public hearing, could we, could we ask for a new public hearing in the event that the, the, the plan is changed?
Yes, you can always revisit that, but there's no, this particular application isn't even secret already. That's, that's, that's basically what we're waiting on. I thought that, you know, not to change the subject, but I thought that this board had adjourned the public hearing to January. Then is that something that was discussed? I know we discussed that 30 days was not going to be enough. That 60 days was...
We might have.
Yeah.
Double, yeah.
I think we did.
What's that?
Oh, that's right.
Right.
It's reasonable to believe he might have thought that it was the January date, though.
Yeah, it's like the snowball just keeps, you know, growing, growing, never we make an accommodation like this. I mean, we've been in this situation several times in the past.
So, at this point, we're looking to either adjourn or close the public hearing. So, what's the pleasure?
Well, we have to open it, and then we'll adjourn it till January. Is that right? So...
If there's anybody here who wants to talk on it, we should open it.
I think he asked.
I asked, and you do, okay, Mr. Crane, please.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Still, Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. There, the wetlands is one indefinite. The applicant was very vague and had no information really about the trees. There were some 80-something maybe. I mean, he was admittedly vague, so there's, there's just a lack of clarity in the, and then the proposing, proposed to replant four trees. And Pete and Rob had a discussion in the public about that. You know, what four trees? Where are you going to put them? So, there's a big, a lack of clarity in the application also, and then there was a steep slope concern. So, it's like the whole, it's not just the wetlands, it's, I'd hate to see it just closed and let, let that get hang, let that get left hanging, you know? Because the application has, that's up to you guys, but I...
We're going to adjourn it. We will adjourn it because of that reason, Mr. Crane. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this until January 18, 2024.
I'll second.
I mean, I guess if I could just put one thing out there. Did we set the...
Yes, here.
...submittel, the dates for the submittals for the meetings as well? So, they, those are the meeting dates, and we're still 17 days prior to code. So, that would put them at January 1, which obviously the town hall's going to be closed. Is it safe to assume that the submittal deadline is January 2?
Should be there as scheduled.
I have the, what Dan's referring to are the, the application's submittal dates or document's submittal dates. So, the 18th...
I think my point would be is that January 2 is a week and a half from now, mixed in with holidays. I mean, the applicant's not here to... So, why don't you just push it to February?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying...
No, no, I'm feeling what you're saying. There's not enough time, and it's just going to be another item that's going to get checked off and bumped.
Then I would like to amend my motion to adjourn until February 15, 2024.
Okay.
And let the applicant know that he has to submit paperwork seven, 17 days before, which would be in January. Yeah.
Thank you, Dan. That makes sense, yeah, and fake.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have the, the Pizzuto Lot Line. And I understand, is there anybody here to discuss the Pizzuto Lot Line? No applicant and no interest from the public. Okay, same situation.
Yeah, last I heard, they're still working with the DEC on the stream crossing and the wetlands crossing to get to the rear of the property, which is, you know, a big component of that. The DEC is backed up as well, so...
Should we do the same thing, considering the holidays and...
I think it's fair.
Yeah? Okay.
I think we should expect that that's going to take a while. If they're going before DEC to get a wetland permit, it takes a long time. They've been, but it hasn't just started. They've been doing this since July or something.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the February 15 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How about we address line item 2? Does any of the board members, do any of the board members have a problem with any of the dates selected for our, our, our meetings next year?
No.
No, I don't have any issues.
It's still the third Thursday?
Yes. All right. Motion to accept the dates.
Also move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, up for discussion now is Duchess Contracting Corporation.
Good evening, Brian Watts from Dave's DeCosa, here on behalf of the applicant who's with us in the audience. Last time we reported the board, we circulated for some additional comments, and we went ahead to move some soil testing out in the field. We thought that was paramount with the likelihood that would change our layout and/or the condition and/or final design. So, we did go out, out on site. I'm not sure if Mr. Kohler was there or not. No, Brian DeCosa from our office was out on site, and the soils were not favorable. The upper areas upwards of there had a very tight, dense clay, which does not lend itself to any kind of infiltration capacity. And the lower areas, about down this particular section, while it was an improvement, there was a very high water table there, which we were wanting to confirm about two to three feet down. So, we had to go back and go through this cycle a little more to try to get it to work with those constraints. A lot of the stormwater management techniques you would utilize require a certain either infiltration capacity and/or depth from the bottom of that stormwater practice to the groundwater. So...
Did you have to move the buildings?
I did move the one in the back.
Here's a table, 23 feet here, 55.
That's a little better.
Lot of clay here.
Try to keep the mic here.
Plus, there's a...
To start, I'll start with the, actually, the driveway that is running on the adjacent properties. The, it's proving quite difficult and cumbersome to try to finalize what the actual property lines are out there, the ownership, the rights, and all the other items that that would entail to correct that. So, we decided to eliminate the improvement of the road. Originally went all the way up with these tiny driveways. The, now we're showing just a sweep into the existing driveway, and the balance will remain as is. So, that will eliminate us having to try to work...
Okay.
That's the ghost of Christmas.
That was, his stomach's growling.
Mine, too, but I'm thirsty. It's not a... Well, so that would eliminate us having to figure that all out and as part of our project, and the neighbors would just remain with what they have. So, the easement would be limited to, to just this, this little pull-off. So, when doing that, it allows me to move this building further over because now the road doesn't have to go all the way up, which gives me a little better separation for my stormwater infrastructure and my utility lines. This, the parking lot in the rear has been modified so that we now have through traffic around. We don't have to turn around. I provided the landing, the loading zone. The retaining wall's been graded out a little bit better, so we have a swale that's going to allow all this water to not run through this site and travel down. We still retain the trees in the back. I did have to lose some of the parking spaces to make this work, so the unit count did go down. The, the buildings I'm showing with that water issue, I'm showing stormwater planters around all the buildings now, concrete built up, rain gardens within stormwater...
Can you point those out again, please?
Right.
These, these, there should be a hatchet.
How many units did we lose?
I believe it went from 54 to 48. I lost three in each, out of each unit. And that was, we lost, we had to lose some of the parking spaces to try and reduce that impervious as much as we can to get the stormwater numbers to feasibly work. So, the, so the roof runoff will go to the stormwater planters, and they will just discharge to the onsite storm sewer system. The upper parking lot will be collected, and we're now showing a bio-retention area on the lower spot. Most of this is built, so I'll have that separation from the groundwater, and I will be able to flow all this impervious to the bio-retention area, try to get as much as we can out of it before it discharges to an overflow into a pond, a pretty large extension of what's already there. The front building remained as is. Again, I reworked the parking to allow for a complete circulation without having to have a dead end. We added the loading zone, the dumpster got moved off the side. So, most of this outside of the building, I can't get gravity to any of the stormwater infrastructure, so we, this has been going through a hydrodynamic separator for treatment before going to a very large pond that's up in the corner.
So, one question with the pond, with the water table the way it is, is that you have to especially everything that we just went through the last couple of days, isn't there a tendency for that to overflow across that road?
We are, it's built up with the existing conditions. There are, currently, there's about a three-foot ditch that just runs straight through here. This is the existing graded area where there is water table, a 24-inch pipe that just discharges currently straight, straight over here to the neighbor's house, septic area. So, this has been sized to accommodate the 100-year storm. We do have a, a large berm coming around here, and there will be an overflow structure which will have discharged towards the D-York State DOT stormwater infrastructure, and it will maintain the print in the post for treatment-wise. Everything's put in the book with this hydrodynamic separator, even the bio-retention, the stormwater, everything, so it'll be treated. I won't be able to get the full runoff reduction volume that they, they seek when they treat the water quality volumes, so we'll be seeking a waiver from the DEC on that. It's not so much anything to do with the print in the post, I just can't, I don't have no infiltration capacity. It's minimal, and I'm providing most of that in the bio-retention. They give you credit for that. I do meet the minimum, which is allowable, and I'll be seeking the hardship because of the, it's, it's all clay, the tight clay, and with the water table, there's, there's no development here that we can, if it in here, even a small one, it's not going to have those kind of issues. Again, we're still waiting on a final design from DOT, which may impact some of the stuff in the entrance. We'll be putting a turn lane in. We're trying to maintain as many units as we can because, again, with DOT putting us in the left, the left turn lane, this is becoming a very expensive proposition to put housing in here.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Repeat that again, with DOT, the turn lane?
Putting a left turn lane in. They're going to be requiring us to put that, put that in at this time as, as opposed to deferring it to the future. So, we, he's got, I have a consultant that's handling all the DOT permitting, design work, traffic counts, and everything of that nature. He's working on it on the side note.
So, it's not a future left turn lane?
It's, no, it's, it's part of the...
Yeah, because you have that on the plans. It says future.
We were showing the future, and then, as a future, and then we were told in the intern that, no, it's, it's going to happen. And once we get that designed, too, we can coordinate with that for those professionals and get it in our plan.
Is it possible that the impact of doing that turn lane could affect the viability of the project?
Specifically in terms of like stormwater and infrastructure?
And financial?
Well, obviously, it'll, it's, it's a big financial leap. I think it will, I think it's still viable, it's just, you know, how, are these going to be market rate, high market rate?
Right.
Low? And even market rate is debatable, market rate is not, I mean, affordable.
Right.
But these are going to be nice, we're, you know, hoping these are going to be a nice, a nice piece of, less little pieces to live here. Also, if anything develops here, because we're showing the dead-end road still, this is going to be an intersection. It's not just going to, shown to occur, but we're going to have the stop signs. So, if anything in the future happens this way, anything in the future happens this way, we can, it could be accommodated here, but if this is going to be the first piece, the first piece of property to be developed, we're hoping that these homes are going to be, hey, this is what could be here. They're nice. But to do that, we've got to keep that unit kind of high.
Right, understood.
That first unit, right, how close to Route 55 is it?
It's, it's within the setbacks.
For the town center setbacks?
Yes.
Yeah.
It, this, this actual number relative to the road, the roadway line, is likely going to change once we get that DOT design in there. We have to get them for a sidewalk and just anything else that they're going to require as part of the improvements to that. So, I mean, the property line as it exists now might shift in maybe five feet, 10 feet, we don't, we don't know for sure at this time. We're just trying to move forward because the, the scale of this pond is larger than we first represented it to be. And we did move the, the buildings and stuff around, and we just want to get the board's input and make sure we're all on the same page so it don't show up as something that looks totally different, and we don't know how we got there.
Is the pond handling stormwater from other residences, those, particularly those neighboring residences?
It's handling, I don't have it, but it is handling most of the stormwater action from up, up in here. My SWIP will show that. I did submit a pre versus post, just map, just to show we did run some preliminary numbers to make sure this is, it's feasible. Most of this property does run down and come along here. We are printing in a swale at the top of the wall underneath this road and the berm to collect approximately the adjacent neighbor's property directly, goes through this ditch, the next property down. It's, it comes down, but it's picked up before the ditch, and it hits the DOT right away, and there's that paved flume that runs down, and that picks it up, and it gets to that catch basin that's, that's out there now, right at the end of the current drive.
And then the catch basin drains it into the pond?
The catch basin drains, and it runs right down the road.
Oh, I see.
It doesn't go to the pond. The pond catches everything up...
Right.
Between that point and our point into that existing three-foot ditch and converts it to the, to the pond now.
So, you're sizing it or resizing the pond to accommodate the new proposed improvements?
Just the new improvements, but we are taking the existing conditions into account next to us.
Great.
If those are developed at some point in the future, those lots would have to accommodate the stormwater somehow on those at that time at their locations, because I'm maxed out, quite honestly. I'm, I'm maxed out. This proposed grading... This proposed grading is, it's real to what I, uh, I have in the model that I depicted and the HydroCAD modeling that I submitted. And I am pretty close to the existing property lines in this, they go down. I can't get too much deeper because I'm already going to be in the water table.
Yeah, tough, tough design challenge.
I mean, my, I would love not to have a pond this, this scale there. But with the, you know, I have no place to come with it up here, it's all clay, it just runs down anyway. And once I get here with the high water table, I'm limited to what I can do with the DEC. Um, ponds, you can be in the water table with some of the pond.
Yeah, it's got to be a surface treatment, yeah, and not an infiltration treatment.
Right. Um, and again, the bio retention is here. This is all filling as we, because this is rising in elevation. So most of this area is all fill until you get to about in here. And then we're starting to cut a little bit, which is why we need the wall. If I, I can't go any, I can't raise the site anymore because I have to hit this point for the driveway. And I'm trying to keep the slopes in accordance with all the code requirements.
When you make the cut further back, what's the effect going to be on the, um, residents on Bischoff Lane?
This area is a cut right in here with the wall. This is actually going to be filled. So there is either driveway and then it's going to berm up. And we're going to have landscaping along the top of that berm between here and the building to try and soften that for what they say.
But the retaining wall's on the other side?
The retaining wall's on the other side. It runs from about here to right around the corner.
Right.
I think that's.
For the.
Well, the feet off the top of my head at its peak, which is about right at the, right at the corner.
What's the size of the retaining wall?
It's about twelve feet. I believe it was about twelve feet tall.
Tall, twelve feet tall?
Exposed face.
Twelve feet in height?
In height.
Exposed face from the parking area?
Right.
Right, you would say the twelve feet from the parking area.
Yeah, it's about that.
Now, is there going to be a cut in back between, uh, that area and, uh, the adjoining, uh, Dalton property? Cause as you go, as you go back in the area, right, where you're showing, uh, the slope rises.
We will not be cutting that. This is, this is the limits of disturbance. Yeah, no. This is approx, should remain about this, under disturbance.
Say that again?
This area down here should, is anticipated based on arthography I have, is this, this line right here? This area has to be disturbed because that's where the utilities are coming up into the back. The storm, water and storm.
This plan, it greatly reduces the amount of open space that you originally proposed.
Pardon?
It greatly reduces the amount of open space that you had proposed towards the back of the lot, right?
I think it's, it's about similar. Um, there's a little bit more grading in here to get some of the water around. So we're not trying to put the entire area into our system. Um, we're trying to maintain it as, with the air, this, the existing comes in here, there's a little bit of grade in here. This is all filled, but originally the road did come, did come up for their driveway.
And the open space is pretty much?
This, if, if we're talking about the open space where the courts are.
Right.
Are about the same size the courts, you could probably fit two, I hear pickleball is pretty popular now.
You're going to put, like tennis type?
I think the tennis is tight, but I think tennis is going to be a little large for the available space.
Is there any green space?
Uh, the, the playground area could be as green as we can add items to. Grass, picnic area, trees, if we want to do something like that instead of a full playground. Uh, we have a little bit of green space between this parking and here. Uh, this is bio retention. It's, it's, it is green, but it's not green like a field, it's.
What, what percentage of the lot is not being used last?
Um, I haven't run a percentage on that. Probably just the undisturbed area. Everything else is being used for bio retention, parking, road, pond.
Do you have a map showing where the existing trees are, if there are?
And that, uh, in, in addition to that, the, the lot was cut back and the swale, the, the hill that comes down towards the back, that was also cut back, according to what I remember. Is that right, Joe?
Yes, that was, that was all.
Longer ago, this used to go, the wall used to go back towards the property line. It was like twenty-some-odd feet tall, the retaining wall. Since then, where the back of the parking lot is right now is where it was when we saw this back in September or whatever.
My, the point of my question is how close now to Van Sgoi? And how much of, of viewshed disturbance is there as a result? Cause you, it seems to me, unless the scale's different, that that parking lot in the back, yep, has now encroached upon the open space that was being proposed when you didn't have these issues with water table and clay and set, that sort of thing. And ownership.
I think the parking is exactly where it was the last time we saw it.
All right, good.
In the backside, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, they, they showed that T-type turnaround for Bischoff on the last plan.
Okay.
The original plan had, I, the road did come all the way up to, I believe it's, I believe that turnaround's already like legally there on paper. If I recall, there, there is a reserved area. Um, it was never built for a cul-de-sac.
Right.
On the subject parcel, you mean?
On the subject parcel.
Yeah.
So if you could.
I could show it, but it, it generally was right in this corner. None of our improvements are actually within that. Uh, we are grading it, but I mean, we're not showing, we're not, uh, building the parking there or anything, but again.
Just going to run san, sanitary and water go through that?
Just, yes.
Yeah.
So if you could satisfy Rob's question, it, do you have the ability to show us where the, the trees are now, pretty much?
I'll have, I'll revisit with the surveyor and the existing conditions map. Um, if we can get significant trees on there. I'm not sure how much, if, if there's a particular size, do you guys?
The code, yeah, the code.
And then I think the, the new plans should clearly show new plantings to mitigate viewshed issues from Van Sgoi.
Yes, this, this was all we submitted this time just to, just to get a feel from the board and see if, I don't know, and have a chance to look at some of the, some of the numbers we submitted, just to make sure we can, we feel that this is a viable path going forward before we really detail that out.
I don't know, again, the first thing that pops in my mind is what is pervious versus impervious here? Seems like it's.
Yeah.
There's a lot of pervious and no impervious. He does talk about the pond as being an item that is calculated into the pervious.
It's just, I mean. Yeah, that's, that's pretty normal. I mean, it's, if it's not, if it's not a hardscape, you know, so when, when they run impervious calculations, which is part of the code to, to check that for bulk compliance, you know, the, it's a hardscape. So it's going to be your buildings, your sidewalks, your, your pavement. You know, and any other area that's going to have a grass coverage or, you know, could be used as a stormwater pond or whatever, we would normally say that that's in the pervious part, not in the impervious.
Right, okay. So this meets our bulk requirements?
Yeah, in fact, the, the plan, I think from, let's see, what was that, September? Uh, there was a September submittal and it met the maximum lot coverage by impervious back then. So it was less than the fifty percent back then and.
Actually, it's technically, it is reduced even further because when we, we lost some of those parking spaces. Um, cause this was, putting the parking spaces along this proper line here was a more efficient use of it than just having straight rows because I had a row here, you know, it was another vehicle path, but it was only going to park on one side of it. So.
So, so back in the September plan, the bulk table said that, you know, maximum lot and coverage by impervious was fifty percent. For lot one was thirty-seven point seven, for lot two was forty-two point five eight. And that's what it still says on the plans that are submitted today, but he's actually reduced that and probably just hasn't updated the table just because this is a concept discussion. So it's, it's going to be less than.
Less than.
Yeah, so they've actually went further below the allowable.
The, the stormwater range runoff reduction volume, to hit that, I mean, there, there, you can get some, um, relief from reducing the entire water quality line, but you still have to meet the minimum regardless. And if you, if you don't meet the minimum, it's a no-go, no matter how hard it is to, uh, you know, accommodate that. So we kind of had it back into the number a little bit and we lost those, those parking spots and we lost, lost some of that. We lost some of the impervious because we're no longer proposing this driveway, which is, you know, as opposed to the old twenty, twenty-four or twenty, a full, uh, road, um, town road all the way up. We're just diving into their existing impervious on their lot. So we've actually reduced that whole road off of our property. So it helped and we actually kind of had to do that just to get the minimum number, yes.
You mentioned town road, is that going to become a town road?
The intention was that this was going to be deeded to the, offered to the town.
I, I know the parallel to fifty-five, but the, the egress into the property, is that going to become a town road? That is still?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the.
I have no problem with it, just.
That's part of the town center master plan was to have a parallel road system to fifty-five. So this would, this would be one of the starts of it.
Okay, that's good.
I'd love for you to come park right here and walk right over to these nice new, nice new courts.
Are they open to the public?
Well, it's a weak town road, so.
Oh, that's true.
See what we can do for that.
Right.
Why not? Maybe it'll help the recreation. Yes, yes.
That's the idea of dedicating recreation land, you know?
Yeah, but then we got to maintain it.
Right, yeah. I, I mean, the, the spirit of the law is to, you're, you're increasing the amount of residents in the community. So we want you to also accommodate recreation services for them, you know?
It's nice, it's a solid point, it helps get, helps fill up the units. Um, and it's, it's becoming more and more popular, uh, some of the various court-based activities, I know, so. We're not against that at all. And I've, and I've read, the shapes are a little different, but the square footage is, I was in the last meeting and I had to lose that.
I realize this is your, this is for discussion purposes and you haven't, um, you know, developed the plan to its full depth yet. But I do want to, for us to discuss, understand, you know, what, um, we would like to see, if there, if there are any impacts. I know when I drive by the site, it's generally open, you know, but we would want to see the trees on the site. Are there any, um, do, do we anticipate there'll be any variances required, uh, under this?
I don't, I don't think you had any proposed in the bulk table, so.
No.
Okay, so so far you're meeting all the code requirements based on what you have now?
Yes.
Yeah, and we, we did have a discussion about the trees at a recent meeting on this one. And I think there was some discussion about there really not being a lot of trees that may, I think it's an eight-inch diameter.
They were all cut.
They've all been cut in the past, so there's, there's a lot of, I'll call them scrub trees for a better, lack of a better term, but, um, there was the parcel to, let's see, I think there was a couple of trees on the, was it NF, uh, now or formerly? I guess it doesn't show it on the map. But basically on the south, the east side, you know, like, yeah, I think, I think there's a residence that's relatively close there. So if there's any, any existing trees that you can show there that are either to remain or be removed, that would be helpful to understand the impact to them, visual impact to them.
They would have, have to be removed. We're showing a, um, all this is sloped generally this way, so we've got a berm to keep the water from the neighbors from, from overtaxing the pond. So it can come down here, overtaxing all of this infrastructure. So it's, it's picked up by here, by this pipe we're showing, which before it comes over to the pond. But we don't want it to overtax any of the bio retention area or just sweep straight across because then we got to, then we're going to treat it.
Yeah, right.
And it, and it changes the calculations.
So we, we need to, I mean, that's the justification of why, but for us to make our decision, and you heard our discussion earlier.
Yeah, well.
We don't want to half-progress into a public hearing.
No, that's why we're here.
Let's, uh, that's why I want to be more than clear at this point that we want to see everything that's required per our code. If our code's requiring the wetland delineation, we want to see the wetland delineation. If it's requiring the, the planting, if there's any reason you feel that, uh, it would be eligible for a waiver or something, you could certainly ask for waivers. That doesn't mean we're going to rule on it and say, you know, or approve it. But, um, we, we do want what's in the code and we don't want to go half into a public hearing without all the information. So that's just my comment.
And, and just to tag on along on his comment there, but it is in the town center. It's in a, an area that is surrounded by, by businesses and residents. And it's very important to consider landscape, plantings, elevations, colors, material.
Yep.
And all of those things have to be presented before we vote to move anything forward along on the, on the other aspects of the application.
Uh, the berm along between you and the adjoining property, right, what's the size of the berm?
Right now we're showing, um, just about two feet, two feet tall by about two feet wide.
And the object, object of that is to, uh, reduce the amount of flow of water onto your property, right?
Oh, that, yes, that we would otherwise have to consider in our stormwater treatment because it's not, no longer clean and contributing to the bio retention sizes. I mean, in order to get the numbers to work, we're trying to divert clean water.
Yeah.
Around and or to the pond directly without impacting any of the sizing for these items.
Okay, I have a big problem with that. The problem is, is that you're creating a problem for that abutting neighbor. Because the berm where the water would normally flow away, now there's not going to be any place for that water to go. So you're, uh, that property at basically any conditions. Uh, I think that you're, uh, going to, I know that you're going to create a hardship water problem for that abutting neighbor. So I think that you really need to, uh, somehow design so that, uh, that water that you are, uh, preventing from entering your property, I think it's your responsibility to carry that water, uh, away out to the, out to Route fifty-five.
Currently, the intent behind the berm was, uh, the berm would carry the water along our prop, along the, the property line. And we're proposing a catch basin here that, in the existing low spot about where the ditch starts. So that will be the, the low spot. So all water that would have transpired by that ditch will now enter this catch basin and will be directed towards the revised pond in the same manner that the existing three-foot ditch that runs through our property carries it. That's, that's the intent.
So you, so you.
There'll, there'll be a longitudinal slope at the toe of the berm that'll, it'll hit it and it'll act a, almost, think of it as like an inverted swale. So instead of having a swale that runs, it's a berm where the toe of that berm, it hits it, but there's still elevation at the toe of the berm that has positive slope and will continue to push the water away. So he's going to put it into that catch basin he was just talking about. So it, it won't actually block it on the neighboring property. It'll hit, it'll run to that catch basin and then it'll be.
Well, then it has to be a sufficient size.
Sure, agree.
To handle the flow so that, uh, that abutting neighbor does not have.
I agree.
We would.
We'll hold you to those calcs.
Yes, in the SWIP, I'm showing some preliminary, you've got to speak to the hundred-year storm, just thinking that's the, you know, if it fails on that, what are we talking about? Um, but we would detail that out. But we would detail that out very specifically in a full detailed SWIP. It would have the dimensions of the berm and I'll put that through so that we can size that. This pipe right now is, I believe it's got to be at least a 30-inch pipe because it doesn't have a lot of edge because again, the groundwater is getting over this pond. So that will be relatively large to carry all this water.
Can you talk about the exterior of the building and any ideas that you have in the way of roof lines and material and colors and will there be...
Right now, we just provided the last renderings from the, I believe it was the previous approval. We haven't changed anything yet. Those buildings still match that size. We can tweak it, obviously. I mean, if the board has a preference.
We're the architectural review board.
Yeah, and Joe, I don't, this goes way back and I have no memory of colors or material or...
That's fine because this is, you shouldn't be going back. This is a new submittal. My understanding is that this is a completely new submittal, so let's start fresh.
Yeah, so you really don't have any plan in your mind yet, is what you said.
I think it stops a lot of flexibility with how these can look. Now we're just going with, these buildings originally were vetted that they work internally so that when we go through this process, we don't say, okay, we're going to try to get 48 units and all of a sudden you get 48 units, the building's got to run 10 feet. Was what it was. Because that, you know, I've seen that happen where you just put a box and then you go through your building code and all of a sudden, oh, this, you know, the building's got to get bigger or change to accommodate that. We've already gone through that with these buildings, which is why we kept moving forward because we know this should work with the 48 units. But, so material-wise on the outside, that's still very flexible if there's any reference. We would, another rendering I would probably show because there are going to be concrete planters in front of these raised planters. The soil is bad, so with planters, you know, you're kind of providing your own soil. So that would be in the front, the hiding and the foundation in the front. Because this is, this is, there's going to be a large gap between the first floor, the finished floor and the ground floor. There's going to be some space. We'll just fill that up with those planters and make that look really nice.
So while you're on the planters, they're part of the stormwater management plan? The buyer retention basins are part of the stormwater retention plan? We as an MS4 have to approve that plan, right? We also have to approve, is there going to be a maintenance, we need to know that there's a maintenance plan.
Absolutely, yeah.
This isn't just, I guess what I'm getting at is, this isn't just an architectural feature that...
Oh, no, no.
It belongs to the stormwater plan, which we as a municipality are, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that's maintained since we're the MS4. So we'll need to see maintenance plans, how is that going to be maintained? Is it homeowners operate and we have to approve it?
Yes.
With the turning lane on 55, is that going to tie in with improvements that DOT is planning? Do you have any idea?
I'm not directly involved with that aspect of the project. He's got a separate consultant. It's Colliers. It's Colliers, very reputable firm. They deal with DOT and transportation quite often. They're going through the design process with DOT on what they're going to require specifically.
That whole section of road is going to be redesigned?
Well, redesigned, I think they're just, a certain amount of our property is going to be deeded towards the DOT so that they can widen there and then just expand a little bit and then narrow back up within our property. I think the right of way is actually pretty wide there. So I'm not sure how much they're going to ask for us.
So we're going to, we're going to want to be privy to those, that information because while we rely on DOT to look at it from a transportation impact point, we also have to sign off on the environmental review, which portion of which deals with impacts of transportation. And so we need to have an understanding of the board of what impact this development will have on the road and how you intend to mitigate that impact.
They've been working on that in the background since, I believe, this September. Once we said, okay, we can go through this project, they got the green light to go. Additional survey work, contact DOT and start getting that process going. We're hoping that if we have the blessing tonight with, you know, the pond, the general idea, we can start developing ours a little more fully. And hopefully, we're going to meet in the middle and coordinate our projects, coordinate the improvements on a single plan that we can present to the board and to the public if it's at that time, if it's appropriate.
Yeah, my recollection is we asked for level service down at the intersection, Beekman Road, Claude Valley, 55.
That was for the other application.
As how this project would impact that as well.
Right, it was, and they graded it, I think, was it a B or...
Oh, I don't remember the letters right now, to be honest with you, but they had already started looking at that. But that's a critical part of our environmental view.
Because of the amount of units. Now, the amount of units is starting to come down since its original inception, which makes it...
At that time, it might be something, they didn't see an impact. That was what was surprising to us.
Yeah, yeah.
So we calculated about 150 people, you know, and cars. But DOT at that time didn't feel that would impact that intersection.
Well, I think it was Colliers.
The Collier report made the assessment, said that it's not going to adversely, in fact, impact the intersection, which was hard, I mean, I just questioned it.
Right, and I think it was actually when they had the 54 units, so it's only six units less.
Yeah, right.
So the board, and I think I mentioned this the last time we talked about this, the board, when they go through the environmental review, we can also have our own traffic consultant corroborate the results of the Colliers.
Right, yeah, that's a good suggestion, yeah. But I think, I mean, my main emphasis is, I'm not trying to, you know, Chris, I just, it's not going to be about, all right, the DOT said it's okay, we're good. You know, we also have a responsibility to our community to make sure that the traffic impacts are taken care of. So we want to...
Some water challenge you have there.
There's some, this is a challenge to the site.
Yeah. What's going to be, it's going to be...
No, but your sensitivity to the, understanding the soils and understanding how that impacts your stormwater practices has been very good. I appreciate the level of research that you're getting into and catering your design to the site conditions. So that I appreciate.
This is probably the third or fourth iteration of me trying to get something that works, that's going to have freeboard in storms, that the pipe's going to fit, it's going to buy gravity without... You can get to it if you had to.
Right.
It's hard, obviously.
That's the code.
You know, if it was easy, everyone would...
Any great deal. Yeah, no, thank you for that. And your explanation was helpful.
I know that, I think the board was hesitant to have any kind of pond by the road. I recall, so again, that's why I was, I really wanted to get this back to the board to make sure that you're not surprised if you're looking at this as a major board. I think if anything else comes up, you know, try to keep the unit count up just to make this work. By, you know, trying to, from a financial standpoint, but if it's going to lose more impurves and losing some of the impurves and people are going to have to be parking, they can parking, I'm either getting a waiver or I'm losing units.
Sure, it's a balancing act. I'm sorry, John.
No, I'm sorry. We were, what Pete and I were talking about.
Secret Santa.
No, not yet, no. They're a shelf on an elf, elf on a shelf. But the, we've always had this problem as a board with the...
Town center.
The comprehensive plan requiring, you know, a commuter-style design, right, or neoclassical design. And it just doesn't lend itself for that, you know, in my opinion. Some of the board members may disagree, but, you know, 55, a lot of traffic, sidewalks to nowhere, not a lot of retail stores, you know, mixed-use properties, just, I don't see it there, so to speak. You know, if you were to do a tear-down and rebuild like, what's the name of that place in Pine Park where the Lutheran nursing home is?
Oh, Eastdale?
Eastdale, yeah. You could do that, theoretically. So we've felt bad about causing, you know, applicants to go before the zoning board of appeals and push the building back, delaying their ability to get through the process. Pete's concern is, is it too close and should we push back and maybe, is that...
Yeah, because of Route 55 and the sidewalk, which is going to be required.
Because you have to get a variance.
And I don't think that you want a building right on top of it.
The problem, Peter, not to interrupt, but that's, that is the criteria for the town center, the setbacks. If you pushed it back, he'd have to go for a variance.
Yeah.
And we're putting a hardship on them.
On them to do that.
Which I don't know that we can do, right?
What's the hardship?
Getting a variance.
They'd have to go for variance.
They'd have to go for a variance. And then my concern now, if we were to cause them to do that, would we be pushing now that parking lot closer to the residents of Dalton Farms and Vanskoy, affecting their view share? Would it benefit you at all because of the problems you have? To push it back as far as you could?
The soil is the soil, no matter where it is on the site. I'm either playing in Play-Doh or I'm playing in a pond. If, specifically this building we're concerned, if I try to take all this and push it back, I'm going to end up having to do something with the recreational space. It's either going to pretty much disappear or it's going to look like a bowling alley with what's left in trying to keep these unit counts up.
So, go ahead.
Can I ask the town attorney, is it within our jurisdiction or whatever word to ask him, the applicant, to obtain a variance because we don't like the town center code? We don't want the building close to the road when in fact, the code requires it. And if you're not going to do it, then you have to get a variance, like we did with Dollar General. So is that something we can request?
You can request...
Have to comply with the setbacks based on the law and the books.
He is, they are complying?
If they're in compliance with the plan, then they...
They have the right to do it.
They have the right to do it unless you make it, unless there's a determination and the engineer can back me up on this, that there's a secret issue by complying with the setbacks for some, whatever reason.
If I can opine on this, the, this issue with, you know, our conflict with the town center regs, I'm not ready to say I'm against, I was okay with the town center plan. I think all we discovered was that every site is different and it's nuanced. And that in some cases, the town center reg didn't really, or the concept didn't really work for certain sites.
Does the town center...
In this case, it actually works for this site.
Does the town center plan accommodate for ponds right by the road? You have buildings and setbacks, but I don't think a body of water was part of it.
I mean, I don't think the town center says anything about natural features like a pond or a plant. But as far as like the placement of buildings, it's very clear on how, they wanted to create a design vocabulary of buildings along the edge of the road. And if there aren't really good examples of how that works, but we've had some applications where we've been convinced that, you know, for their property, it didn't...
I'll tell you what happened to me personally, Keybag. About 10, well, 10, 15 years ago, was going to double the size of the building. The town required them to move the building within the setbacks. And we lost that. I mean, it cost us millions of dollars in value that the Keybag was going to add to our building. And that's another case where you have an existing building within the town center. They wanted them to move it forward. And then even at that, they weren't going to allow them to temporarily operate a trailer. I mean, it was absolutely ridiculous. And you're right, each property is different.
Each property is different, and I don't think it's our job to sort of relitigate what we decided when we decided on that town center plan. Our job is to try to ensure that the town center plan is accomplished. But we can always, there's a venue for that. We can always go back and do a new study and then reconsider the town center plan. This isn't that venue.
I would say it's public safety.
How would you figure that? You say this is a public safety?
Where are the traffic on Route 55? Where are the traffic on Route 55? No, where are the traffic on Route 55?
I'm looking, I'm listening.
And my concern is the proximity, the proximity of the building and the sidewalk to Route 55. That's what my, that's what my concern is.
I get your concern. You see, it's, well, all right, so Dollar General, if we didn't allow them to go back... Yeah, exactly. And they would have had to have had two entrances in their building, right? It would have been a security nightmare. I remember when the original application was before the previous board and we voted to push all the buildings towards the back. And the reason, the reason was that we were concerned about the fact that now you have tenants, their windows, their view is now of a highway, right, over here. So that is one of the things that, but it's not uncommon. I mean...
I think the spirit of the town center was to try to create a village atmosphere. But what they didn't take into consideration is a high-volume highway running through the village.
Right.
Because you're not going to slow down 54, you couldn't, you can't. But that's, that was why they wanted a streetscape, so to speak.
Okay.
Make it look like Millbrook.
With the sidewalk and the trees and...
But it is supposed to be, people are supposed to slow down. There's a speed limit.
I hear you.
That part of it we took care of.
Right.
And if someone's speeding through the town center, it's not because of the design of the road. It's because they're breaking the law.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one comment about safety, public safety that Peter brought up. First of all, you have to consider all competent evidence that comes before this board. And the only competent evidence for a perspective of public safety on a state highway would have to come from DOT. So you're going to have to get DOT involved here. Somebody brought up the point about the retention pond being close to Route 55. Again, that's DOT really would have the best view, you know, and opinion as to that particular fact. And we can reach out to them. They've been noticed on...
They have, yeah. Thank you for reminding us of that.
I mean, I would venture forward and say, we do have a town engineer who's skilled in understanding the clear zone of a road and obstructions and we can have an applicant, I mean, we have private roads, right? So we don't require, that are town, we have town roads. And we rely on our town engineer to review the proposal from an engineering standpoint to make sure that there's no safety issues, engineering-wise.
Okay, I have one more question. If you're talking about the town plan layout, you got a pond there next to a major road. Aren't you going to now also have to put some sort of barrier? So if there's an accident or God forbid something, you jump that, so your town center plan is going to have what? plan is going to have what, guardrails?
Well, the children or anybody...
And they also fill up.
So, I'm asking.
Even on the ton.
If this is a DOT thing, then it's a DOT thing. But we're talking about town center plan and impact, right?
Right.
So, isn't this something that we should be considering?
Right. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, Jason, it is. We got to make sure that there's no anchor fencing around it either.
Yeah, I mean, there's a pond there right now.
Yeah, it's already there.
It's there now.
We have one over there.
They'd be expanding on it right now.
Right. Getting deeper.
When you drive by, it's all the cattails there. There's a pond there now.
Okay.
You know, so, the only, the only time we have to put fencing around a pond, and we don't do ponds a lot anymore, but
No.
normally we have to do ponds to make up water quality volume that you can't satisfy in what's called a runoff reduction volume in your upstream green infrastructure practices. So, sorry to get technical about it, but when you have ponds, if you have safety benches and aquatic benches that are supposed to be incorporated into the designs per the manual, you don't need to put fencing. If you can't meet those aquatic and safety benches, then you certainly are supposed to provide some level of protection to make sure somebody's not walking in, they fall in, can't get out.
Well, the retention...
They didn't meet the...
Dollar General was an organic filter and a four-bay. And I think the four-bay had the slopes that required some sort of protection.
Those are in the back of the building.
And I think they also may have done that just because they're going to have people in and out, and they didn't want people going in there either.
Liability.
Yeah.
Isn't that somewhat of a retention area in the front to the east?
I'm sorry?
Or the west of Dollar General, isn't it there?
Yeah.
Along the road?
Yeah.
With the fence?
On the left side facing the building.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, at the end of the day,
Yeah.
the low point of the site is where the pond is now. I mean,
Right.
gravity's taking the water down there regardless. You know, we can't have them put a pond upstream because you can't get the water up there. You know, gravity's going to take it where it's going to take it.
I mean, I'm sensitive to all these concerns. I'm not convinced that there's a safety concern for the building. I have to disagree with you on there. But, but as far as like, you know, the proximity of the building to the road, yeah, we should definitely consider robust planting between 55 and the building, soften its edges aesthetically so that it looks nice in our town center.
I can try to... Move the building farther, closer to the existing, the proposed park. And take those planters and double the size of the front. But I do have to
Would that require...
thing with the roof leaders and how to get it from the back of the building to the front if that's where I'm putting them.
Does that require a variance?
The...
Moving the building back?
I don't believe it does. Still within the, we're still within the boundary, I believe.
Because I think your setback to 55 considers that you're going to already be dedicating some road area for the turning lane. So, that, he's already considering that it's going to be the 0 to 15 to the right-of-way line once that happens. In its current state, it's about 55 feet from the edge of the building to the white line of 55.
Oh, okay.
So, once you, once you add maybe an 11 to 12-foot turning lane in there, then it'll be 33 to the white line of 55.
Right.
And assuming that the turning lane comes completely this way, you know, on the project side. And then, so then by the time you get to the right-of-way of the road, which could be another, say, 18 feet from the white line or whatever it ends up being, then you're going to be that 0 to 15. So, right now, we're just assuming that once that dedication of right-of-way to the state comes in, that he's going to have that 0 to 15 required in the front yard.
Let's see what happens.
Yeah, final, you know, that has to be, that has to be hashed out. And of course, you know, again, softening things with landscaping and all that, that's good detail that will definitely have to be considered and...
Yeah, and well-taken, well-noted with the pond, making sure there are benches in the pond. And if there's not, if there's any safety issues where a kid could fall in
Right.
and drown, then you know those requirements or you should. And if it has to be designed where there's a drop-off potential, you'll, then we have to see, how are you putting up a barrier? And then how are we buffering that barrier?
But this will have all of the plants in it and everything, those 40, however many plants and...
Yeah, the pond.
Yeah.
The pond will have to have different zones of planting. So, you're going to have zones of planting where you have shallow water, you're going to have plantings for the deeper water, you're going to have plantings on the areas that are riparian, if you will, or where they get periodically inundated, but then drops back down to the normal level of the pond. And then you're going to even have some around the berm area, too.
Right. It's not going to be an open, it's not going to be an open pit like down by...
No, it has to be landscaped. The landscaping is actually part of the water quality treatment that you get out.
The credit union down...
What's the road there?
What's the one going?
It's not necessarily a hole in the ground anymore is the point though.
Yeah, right.
Brian, just so you, while we're at the stormwater stuff, so, you know, we took a quick look at some of the preliminary stuff that was sent to us. I guess the thing is, that bio-retention area, you probably get some more RRV when you actually route some of those other areas that appear to be going into it. They weren't routed into your model, but it's oversized right now. So, you may be able to get some more of that RRV in there.
It's a little tweaking with trying to keep the stormwater piping and the sanitary water for oil separation. So, I'm just adding, like, tweaking, so I'm not going to assume I get it.
We think that the concept is probably going to be able, you're probably going to be able to make it work. But, you know, obviously, the pond is going to be the hardest one of them all because that's got to take into account what you can't get upstream. And between the benches that may be required and your water quality volume that you have to make up in there, your extended detention of CPV, and then your QP and your QF, you're going to have to, you know, give us all that, obviously. So, you know, you're going to have to work it. But it seems like it's a feasible concept in terms of the stormwater.
It'll be a pretty big, a pretty big separator, it'll be a pretty sizable one. I was going, I was trying to do two, but
Yeah.
by the time I get, because of this, the piping sizes, I'm going to need to, because I'm at shallow pitches, I can't, I have 30-inch pipes probably, so I bumped up to the next size anyway just by the limitations of the separator. So, at that point, I was like, might as well put it in one, two.
Okay.
And then I can move that around. Separator, oh, I changed that number.
Yeah, I guess the point is, is, you know, obviously, the one thing I would worry about from the preliminary is that you gave us the 100-year numbers, but then your outlets might be a little bit higher or whatever based on getting that WQV and your CPV extended detention in there as well with benches and whatever.
I might have two pipes coming out at different sizes or something.
Yeah.
It was a lot of negatives.
I'm sure.
Didn't work, didn't work. It is what it works. I tried, tried some dry swell, I just, the numbers just weren't adding up.
Yep. Well, this is, this is a typical case where minimum RRV, the waiver is normally granted because you don't have the ability to really have good filtration or infiltration through the soils that are there. You've got clay soils and a high groundwater table, and you have to have separations to the groundwater table. So, this is, this is one of those very standard type of sites where that waiver is granted. But then you have to make it up in the pond with the more traditional pond.
Has to go through DEC? I thought we have...
No, we would do the waiver.
We have to prove a waiver.
Yeah, as the MS4, we would, we would do it. Now, they go to submit the NLI, that still has to go to the state. Doesn't mean that they're not going to red-flag something and ask questions later.
Yeah.
So, what do we say to this man?
Good discussion.
Good discussion.
It was one of the better ones I've had in a while, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Lots of good points and your blessing. I think we're going to just keep trying to, mostly stormwater, I think, is, that's my, the biggest challenge. I will double-check on the, if I can move this house, that building back even another foot, I will try to, try to move it back.
Yeah, if you could just take our comments into consideration, I don't think any of us have any drastic changes to the layout.
Yes, again, I'm basically picturing if it's in the property line except for the rear, it, the trees are going. Realistically, I mean, I could, I could sit here and say, I could save this one and that one. By the time we're done digging this, filling that, paving this,
Right.
you might end up killing the tree anyway, even if you don't actually directly...
Just find the code requirement for the size. And if, if there's trees of that size, then they have to be shown regardless if they're going or staying.
And then you'll be replacing with new trees throughout the property?
Yes, I haven't done a, until I get all of this really dialed down, I'm hoping for a pretty robust landscaping plan. Lots, you know, a lot of street trees around the corners, some buffering wherever we can fit them, maybe some evergreens or anything, help with the noise around the play area. I could do some double plantings maybe here, so it's really kind of a hard area to, a hardy area that will block some of the noise. There's not a lot I can do up in here. This, I'm anticipating, I'd like to do as much as I can, but with the utilities along that side, I won't be able to put a ton of plants there.
Sure. Maybe on the neighbor's side of the utility? You could fit it in?
I could put it probably like on the line, but again, the existing driveway is also right along that property line. It's a tough balance. But we'll, we'll try to get as much as we can in there. Subject of course, anything that we're able to...
The plannings, are they going to be designed to be implanted?
I think it depends on whatever the plants we end up. Whatever, depending on the plants we actually put in the landscaping plan. Will be if it's in planters or if it's in ball roots planted. Maybe I'm misunderstanding a question.
I'm thinking that it's going to be very hard to sustain plant material in a clay condition. And also the other side is in wet condition.
The, the lower side is actually going to have some fill for the whole site. Starting here and I'm grading up as I go. So, most of this has a certain degree of build. So, hopefully that will be filled that we can use to have some kind of planting that can tolerate any wet conditions. We could definitely work with all the members on plant selection.
I would want to take a cue from, you know, what the biological indicator is, you know, like, there are red cedars growing all crazy over here. Red cedars clearly love that soil. Red cedars will be successful plantings.
Absolutely. I'm going to try to keep this native so it looks like it's blend, I say blend, I mean, I don't know how much it can blend it, but hey, this tree could have been here before. It's a little more, more of a mature, it'll take some time to get them in there, but...
I'm just using it as an example.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a, it's a, it's a difficult soil for, you know, there are plants that grow in difficult conditions, so...
This site is all about challenges, is this another one?
You know, what he was saying was that whatever's growing there now, yeah, would be successful in the future, probably, yeah.
Yes, and we'll try to keep that theme as we go along. If it doesn't mature, hey, this looks like it's been there for a while.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, you know, street trees are street trees, but what's a good street tree that works with those soils, you know, something with wet feet or not, not well-drained soils, you know, poorly drained soils. Look at street trees that can tolerate poorly drained soils. Because the first, you're going to put topsoil down, obviously, but once it grows into that layer, that's when it struggles.
Anything more for gentlemen? Anybody have any more comments? Dan?
I think I would just mention, we started the lead agency circulation process. One of the comments came back from the Water, Waste Water Authority that as a result of becoming a tenant or whatnot of the, of their district, that there would have to be a legislative action by the Dutchess County Legislature. So, we, what they said, so that, that means because they have to give some sort of an approval, that they would need it to be included in the lead agency circulation. So, the planning department has forwarded that to them as well. So, probably by the next meeting, we would at least have responses back from most of those agencies that we asked from. So, I think Health Department, DOT, and Water, Waste Water Authority might have sent something back, which I forwarded to your office already.
But they're viewing this plan, Dan?
What's that?
Isn't this new?
It's, it's, it is a bit marginally different. We could, in terms of lead agency, I don't think that it would necessarily change an agency's opinion on whether or not they defer to this planning board as being the lead agent. Craig, do you have any thought on that? If there's some minor changes to this from the lead agency circulation? I mean, project changes are going to happen during the process regardless.
If they're more than de minimis, it might have to be recirculated if it would affect secret. That's something...
I don't really see any significant changes in terms of environmental. I mean, if anything, they've reduced impervious, the site, you know, the site is still getting access from the same point. You know, from Water, Waste Water Authority's perspective, it's less units, so it's less water demand, less sewer going to their pump, you know, to their, to their treatment station, so...
So, them relegating lead agency to us or allowing us to be lead agents?
Yeah.
Do they get a second crack at this, or what do we do to the planning board?
So, what they do is, they, what we ask for is, number one, do you object to the Town of Beekman Planning Board acting as lead agency for seeker purposes? And number two, if not, provide us with some preliminary comments. And most of them will say, you need our permit, you know, you need an approval from our department. We don't object to the planning board being lead agent.
All right. Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, in terms of, you know, if they, if they came in and said, we're looking to put a Kmart here now instead, it's new ballgame. You know, it's the same proposal. I don't know, are they still around? Caldor?
Oh, my God.
I don't know.
How about Bradley's?
Bradley's, you want to go Bradley's? All right, yeah.
Half your audience is north of...
You know, so, so, but, but the point is, is that if the use had changed significantly and if, if, even if this particular layout
No, I give it to you.
had significantly changed, then I would say, you know, that an update might be required. But in essence, we still identify the permits that are required from those interested or involved agencies, and they're going to have to get those permits. So, they'll have cracks at reviewing it then, too.
Sure, okay.
Before we get done with that, okay? The next extension we've got to look at is Alena Estates. And what Dan sent out was something, or in reference to...
Is this connected to this gentleman?
Yeah.
Who is this?
Well, it's the same effect because they're going to water the waste or whatever they're...
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough spot that they're in, yeah.
Okay, well, apparently on Alena Estates, it's something to do with the cost, the buy-in cost or whatever it is to...
The upgraded water system, yeah.
Whatever it is, so...
Whatever.
Is, is this project going to run into the same...
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a fair question. So, the Alena Estates issue is that there's a pump station across Beekman-Pokway Road that had some issues. And being that their flow is going to go to that, the Water, Waste Water Authority needed some upgrades to that pump chamber. In this case, for this particular site, they've got a letter of allotment where the Water, Waste Water Authority has guaranteed them up to, you know... allotment where the Water Waste Water Authority has guaranteed them up to, you know, I don't know, 10,000 gallons or whatever it was. In this case, they're going to be building their own new pump station. So I don't expect that there'd be any significant issues with regard to that. I mean, there's still probably some sort of a buy-in that's probably been worked out already with regard to the allotment of the water and the sewage that they were gonna get. But you're right, I mean, it's that's something that's it's out of your hands, though. You know, it's out of the planning board's hands.
It is a question on the secret. Is there gonna be an impact to the community? There's that infrastructure section, right? Is there, will there be an impact to community sewer? And and in the case of Alena, we probably should've said, well, yeah, if there's, the system can't handle it, or it's in, it's not up to capacity, and and then we need, they needed to explain how they were gonna address it. That's that's.
Right. They could've done the mitigation as part of the environmental review.
So who builds the pump station, contractor?
They, yes, the applicant here would build this pump station.
And in that application, it was the.
It's an existing one.
It's an existing one that Dutchess County Water and Waste would've had to have reopened, would've had to have updated.
There was upgrades, and I think that they were putting that cost on the applicant on that one, too.
And that cost was three times what?
I think there's a lot of.
Yeah.
Upgrades that need to be done to the pump or pump station that were, regardless of what's going there, potentially future, past, present, it was just in a state of disrepair. And I think there was some back and forth on, well, if it's it's not necessarily a capacity issue so much as a condition issue.
I see.
Who's responsible for getting it up to snuff, not because there may or may not be specific capacity issues so much as it's an older oldish pump station that just needs a little a little rehab to be the best it could be, if you will. I think there is a.
Without water or sewer from Dalton, this project is dead. You you can't provide onsite for this. You know, obviously, if the soils are this poor for stormwater, you're not gonna get it for sewage, you know, for onsite sewage disposal. So, you know, that is an integral step, and part of this project is maintaining that future connection up there and being able to, you know, work out a deal with Water Waste Water Authority that actually.
But to answer Peter's question, we're not anticipating the same types of issues because we're doing our own pump station.
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate that. Doesn't mean that something doesn't change.
How about on the treatment side, though?
They've allotted that flow, so they're saying that their plant has that capacity to take on the flow.
Okay.
Okay. That will be it.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
Yeah.
We just care too much.
Can't care too much.
Just can't. That's why our kids tell us, care less what your plans say.
So the next item on the agenda, we've already dealt with the the meeting dates. The other item now, Pete pretty much covered the issue there. Dan, you wanna elaborate on that? Or can we just move forward and grant extensions? Does everybody understand why Alena Estates?
I read the emails, sir. I mean, is there any prospect they're gonna, do we have any reason to believe they're going to be able to resolve this issue?
There's no guarantees. They have a taxes.
Right.
It sounds like a financial issue.
Yeah, it's just all around unfortunate. But so it's my opinion that we should just move forward with two 90 days, right?
So I I printed out a potential resolution for your consideration, and I, the applicant asked for two 90-day extensions. And I put the option in there, if you wanted a grant. One, it would be through March 20th, 2024. If you wanted to grant two 90-day extensions, it would be through June 18th, 2024. There is a there is a little bit of a difference in this particular resolution because the escrow has been an issue. And and being that some of this transactions that were supposed to happen have not happened, this would be an additional condition that would be added on to this. And I think what I'll do is, I can read this to you so that you can can hear it, and then I would want our council to also opine on it. But it's, regardless of which, if you take one 90 day or two 90 days, it would be further resolved that this extension is conditioned on the applicant submitting an escrow payment in the form of a bank check in the amount of $9,748.75 to the Town of Beekman Finance Department, no later than December 28, 2023, at 2:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, where failure to do so will result in an expiration of this conditional extension of approval, an expiration of the conditional subdivision approval of October 18th, 2018. So if they don't come into the town with a bank check to cover the escrow and replenish by next Thursday at 2:00 PM, not only would any extension that you grant them tonight expire, but their conditional approval would expire as well because then.
Yeah, I would add that the applicants represented by council and the applicant agreed to this condition.
The applicant and the applicant, and then we got a letter from the applicant's council or email saying they also, yeah, that's correct.
They have agreed to.
They have agreed.
Yeah.
They've agreed to the condition.
This condition.
You have to, you have to determine the extension.
Right. They've agreed to the extension.
The condition.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna pay up.
If they don't, they lose out, you know, that's.
I like that. For once, it's got some bones.
All right. So any discussion?
I'm in total agreement.
Okay.
So the the question is, is it one 90 day or two 90 days?
One 90 day.
One 90 day?
I'm good with that.
Yeah?
I'd recommend two 90 days.
What would be the advantage of one versus the other? You two, if you guys could, what do you what do you want to accomplish?
I mean, the one 90 day motivates them more to resolve this issue.
Well, it's it's.
It's up to the waste.
There there was a buyer on this subdivision, okay, and through no fault of this particular applicant, that deal is being postponed because of a third-party Dutchess Waste Waters insistence on was a water rate that was.
The upgrade charge and whatnot, right? Is that appropriate term? Was it upgrade charge or was it a buy-in fee? I don't I don't know.
More of a, I hate to say word upgrade, but just maintenance costs, really.
It wasn't there at the time of the initial subdivision approval. The cost wasn't known.
There was a, there was a number that was in the, I believe, in the MOU.
Why?
Yes.
Why can't the existing buyer pay this fee?
That's the thing. They were on the verge, I mean, you're really.
I'm sorry, why can't the existing owner pay for this?
He is. He's paying the the escrow fees that are.
Yeah, I mean, regardless, there's, when there, this is, this is an interesting, you know, I'd hate to be.
He's not subject to that cost.
I'd hate to be a closing attorney on this one because there was gonna be this transactions that had to, you know, deal with the cost of the property and the and the approvals and project costs to date. But then the new developer would've been coming in and setting up the recreation fees and and also the taking care of the performance bond and and all these other things. So there's really, it's it's a little bit of a convoluted process. But you're you're absolutely right. The current owner could just satisfy all these conditions and have the project completely approved, and he could go sell it that way, too.
Or he could build it himself.
Or he could build it himself, that's true. He's done it before, but.
Doesn't it set a bad precedent for us to get involved in the what seemingly is a real estate transaction?
Well, the seem to be said about the other decision that you're considering, which is to deny it. So I just wanna caution you to be, you know, to use your discretion, but widely in this particular situation.
What does that, what does that even mean?
We don't have to do anything. We could let it expire.
Well, really, you don't even need to consider economic factors. That's no concern of yours, given your necessary background, I guess, in this case, to help you determine whether or not you wish to grant two 90-day extensions.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to throw a wrench in the machine. I I just wanna understand if we're setting up a a policy whereby every development we approve can sit in a conditioned, unfinished thing until certain real estate transaction that buys people more time, that, you know, I I I don't know if that's good for us. I don't know if that's good for the town.
So now, from what I understand, this one would be favorable in the way it was it was designed. So meaning that they 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 gave us a large area that will remain open space. There's a stream going through there that they're not affecting. It's.
It was a good design.
It's nice design. I think it was, you you, it wasn't even in.
It's a subdivision, it's a good design.
Yeah, you guys put it together really nicely. I think that weighs it out. But if I could see if it was the opposite of that, we would want to exercise our our ability to do that, you know.
So what motivates this? I I know that they're trying to make this transaction, and then there's this buyer, and, you know, I don't have control over that transaction. If I were there, I'd say, hey, how about you do this, and and let's make this deal happen. All, we're depending on the applicant to 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 make this do. So what what motivates him? What, how do we motivate him to move this forward? The way we motivate is by doing just one 90 day, and then if, and then if then there's a chance that we don't approve it then, and that should motivate him to move quicker than he's than he's currently.
What is, what does council recommend?
Since the local law with extensions was passed by the town board years ago, there's been a change in the state legislature, which is passed a law that that actually is more favorable to granting extensions. More leeway, more discretion is is given to boards rather than rigid two 90 days or six months with two 90 day extensions. There's more latitude to go out further. And that's what you have here.
Okay, but if we're, if we're given the latitude to go out further, we're also given the latitude to consider what the items are that are, or issues are that are holding the project, holding things up, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
But they're not gonna be moving forward until they satisfy the conditions for the project, right?
It's not gonna.
You have to satisfy all the conditions.
Yeah, you have to satisfy all the conditions anyway. So what the hell difference is it, Rick?
Is there any downside to the one 90 day?
No, I know you're gonna be back here.
It's not like, yeah, so you'll come back, give us an update, and.
Are you representing Alena Estates?
I am.
You are?
He called me and asked if he could. He's not in the area right now with the holidays.
Okay.
So they've had, they had that buyer, and most of the time, I recall, since late spring, early summer, has been trying to rectify the concerns with Dutchess County Waste Water Authority. The costs were a factor, I think it was five or so, from what the original understanding was.
Five what, five?
Factor of five for the cost.
Five times higher than.
Five times higher.
The original.
What the original.
And I think it was like.
Agreement was under.
Hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty was the original number?
How much, how, how, I mean, while we're talking finances and real estate, how much is, how many, how, how, with the increase of property values, how much is that going up?
Truthfully, I'm, I try to get away from real estate for this very reason.
Now, we can't talk about that part of the thing. We can only talk about, we can only talk about the hardships, the hardships.
I have no idea what that would have his financial outlook is on this.
I mean, let's go over all the fat, all the financials and make a financial decision here. My point is, is we don't consider financial decisions.
Only that that cost was, he went in with a good faith buyer, and when that number came up, it's been the attorney, the applicant's attorney and and so on, has been going back and forth with whether or not this is something they could do, or why are they doing it? Is there, you know, leeway with that?
So let's do this.
But they're getting closer to an agreement?
I think at this point, I'd like to just, I'd like to just, is there a motion on the floor?
No.
So can I ask for a motion?
Can I hear what you had to say?
All right.
I I believe with terms of the Dutchess County Waste Water Authority, it had elevated beyond the the low to the legislature in some form regarding on if this was, what what they could, couldn't do, what they think is the best methodology to kind of come to a resolution that's between both parties was applicable. So the, so the buyer has sensed, you know, now we, he's trying to put some, a lot of time into this, and it's now, we're in December, and it still hasn't come to a resolution. So now his finances, he's, you know, is this viable for him? So so they're, they are working on this, to my knowledge. But it's since July, and it's been the single singularity of one issue with the Dutchess County Waste Waters, money that they were required to make improvements.
I'll make a motion for a 90-day extension.
Now, I would note that the math brings that to March 20th, 2024, and the March meeting is March 21st. So technically, they'd have to be here at the February meeting to request another extension.
What does it bring it, excuse me?
March 20th, 2024.
Oh, okay. Can I make, can I motion it to March 21st?
Excuse me?
Thirty-one day extension?
And our meeting is on the 24th?
The 21st, March 21st.
Okay, so why can you not make your resolution?
What, yeah, we could.
To grant a.
A hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty days. That way we'll do a meeting.
I'll do the math here. What's the.
March is good through December 21st, 2023.
We could grant a 91-day extension, can't we?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, let's just continue to split hairs. Why don't we go by the hour?
Hey, that's why we have a.
April 19th. Hundred and twenty day would give them until April 19th, and our April meeting is April 18th. It's up to you guys.
I'm just gonna make a motion for ninety, 91 days, so we can do it on the March 21st meeting.
All right.
To March 21st, so the, through March 21, 2024, 91 days.
Yes, yes.
Can I have a second? You like it? So you're seconding it with a like?
I double like.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And just, just for the record, it should note that the the extra condition I read previously was part of this.
Here's to being noted.
Yes.
I'm going off those dates. I think, you were looking at a calendar, right?
I think I've watched the state legislator deliberate, all right? We spent way too much time on an extension tonight. That is my feeling here.
Sure.
Yeah.
Excel, I think, takes that into consideration, too, so.
I wanna move on to the. I wanna move on to the Greenhaven's. This is, I want Jason to handle this start to end, all right?
This one's not me.
This is not you. Thank you very much.
Jason, I have a hand one on, you are on.
Thanks, Brian.
This is your favorite, okay? The Greenhaven Road Solar Community. They're asking for an extension. You are now taking over discussion. It's all you.
What is the extension for?
Dan, I don't know if you heard Jason.
What is the extension for? Justification for?
The amount of time on it, or?
No.
Or the reason why they need it?
The reason why they need it, please.
Okay. I think they've been working with you mostly at this point.
So, so they have actually been working with me on, like, decommissioning, uh, agreements, easements, and pilot, um, agreements, which have really gone aboard. They've actually been very diligent about follow-up. Um, and we're like on the one-yard line. We're really close. All right, so I do recommend another 90-day, um, extension. I don't know if, Dan, you have any conditions that are outstanding in your end?
No, I, I think it was more about the stormwater easement agreement and all of that, so you've been kinda working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, they're knocking on the doorstep.
Yeah, the stormwater, uh, uh, the stormwater agreement's actually done. It's fine. Pilot is done. I, yeah, there was just one agreement. I think we're just tweaking.
Technically, they're good right now through January 14th. So, if you add 90 days, that would bring it through April 13th, 2024.
On a project that's already approved, that's already been gone through and everything, and they're just working through the rest of the remainder of the process.
Right, no, no changes in circumstances or anything to that effect that would change the board's decision.
And you're confident in their progress and everything?
They've been, they've been doing well.
Divisions, I think. No, no, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
The, the decomp agreement is time-consuming.
There's a big difference between this one and the last one.
No, no, I get it.
This one's not a financial, we're not waiting for two jurisdictions to figure out what's the best price.
Just the one.
One 90 day.
They're gonna get 300 days, I think. They really wanna get God to do this, so.
All right, I'll move to grant a 90-day extension.
Oh, Pete, I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And again, for the record, that's through April 13th, 2024.
Very good.
Did I move to adjourn?
Yes, please.
So that was the motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yes.
And a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.